Recording in progress.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Scanlon, I believe, will be joining via Zoom. Oh, there he is. I think he'll be joining us shortly.
Okay. Let me know when he's ready.
Okay. Looks like he's on. He just needs to unmute himself. Here we go.
Your turn.
Okay, we're good.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Igoe. I'm chairman of the Yarmouth zoning Board of Appeals. We will now convene the October 9th, 2025 meeting of the Yarmouth zoning Board of Appeals. This is a hybrid meeting. It's being recorded. We will begin by taking a roll call to establish a quorum. Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. Mantoni?
Yeah.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yeah.
And I'm present as well. We have a quorum, so I will now call the meeting to order. First, we have four matters on our agenda this evening. The first matter is petition 5194. Edward Shea, Shea Custom Carpentry. The property is located at 18 Chestnut Street, South Yarmouth, Mass. It's in an R-25 zoning district. And the applicant is seeking a special permit per 104.3.2 subpar paragraph two and/or a variance from section 203.5 for side setback relief to add a five-foot-by-four-foot stoop with steps. Good evening. Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members. For the record, my name is Kieran Healy. I'm a land surveyor with the BSC Group, representing the hides and builder, Mr. Ed Shea. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, we are looking for relief for the side setback. If I could draw your attention to my plan, it's on display here. The area that we're talking about is this section right here. Basically, what we're looking for is the stoop and the two steps that are around it to get up onto this. Based on renovations that have been proposed for the building, a kitchen will be right adjacent to that stoop. And this is a means of getting out of the kitchen and getting access into the kitchen. We are doing other work on the property, but none of that requires relief interior construction and so on. We're all conforming. The building itself is conforming. And this stoop is just a side entrance into the building. I could go on, but I don't think there's a whole lot more to be said. It's just a side stoop to get into the side of the building. Other than that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Mr. Martin, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
So is this stoop too large to be covered under the bylaws relevant to... Aren't stoops...
In the front setback, they are. There's no relief for the side setback.
Relief for the side, huh? Hmm. All right. That was my only question. Still almost 12 feet from the sideline, and it's just a stoop. So I don't have any real problems.
Okay. Mr. Mantoni, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
No, no questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Ms. Murphy, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
Um, no. Is there any chance you could swing it around the back if this is the kitchen it's going into?
Yes, it just doesn't work with the layout of the room on the inside. We've looked at that, but we just couldn't get away to make it fit on the rear of the building.
Okay. All right, yep, no questions.
Okay, Mr. Scanlon, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I don't really have any questions. I think this is a special permit. I'm looking at your... Let's see, you have... That's a side setback. You're required to have 15, if I'm correct. You're showing presently 14.9. So I don't think that side setback is presently conforming, even though it's legally pre-existing non-conforming. So I don't think it's a brand-new non-conformity. I think we can do it as an extension or alteration of the existing home. So I would suggest that a special permit versus the variances, what should be granted? I don't have any questions either, and... Let me go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none. Do we have anybody online, Dolores?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none. Anyone with their hands raised?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Healy, is there anything else that you'd like to add?
No, Mr. Chairman. I think everything's being covered.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we're gonna close the hearing to the public. We're gonna open it up for board discussion. Is anybody prepared to open up a discussion or to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve petition... A special permit for petition 5194 is requested.
Okay, no conditions, correct?
No additional conditions. Nope, no conditions.
Oh. We have a second to that motion.
A second?
Okay. Okay, we have a... We have a motion made by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Mantoni. Any discussion on the motion? The only thing that I would add to it is I think the petitioner has met the criteria of the bylaw. I think he's only asking for a small amount. I don't think it's gonna be more detrimental to the neighborhood or any nuisance or hazard or congestion to the neighbor next door. I certainly don't think it would be degradating from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. So with that said, we're gonna take a... Anyone else wish to make any comments on this? Hearing none? Okay. We're gonna take a vote on it. Mr. Scanlon?
I'm in favor of issuing the special permit.
So you're an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Murphy?
Um, I'm an aye.
Mr. Mantoni?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So that passes five in favor, none against. You have a request for variance. Would you like to request to withdraw that relief without prejudice?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we have a motion to withdraw that without prejudice?
I'll move to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion made, seconded. We're gonna do a roll call on this. Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Mantoni?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Scanlon?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So that's five in favor, none against, allowing the petitioner to withdraw his request for relief for variance. As you know, Mr. Healy, there is a 20-day appeal period once this matter is clocked with the town clerk. After that period, Dolores will contact you. And we'd ask that you or the owner of the property take that over and have it recorded at the registry of deeds and bring back a copy for our file.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night. The next matter is petition 5195, GCB 169 Route 6A LLC. And Gregory C. Belzecian, property located at 169 Route 6A, Yarmouth Port, Mass. It's in an R-40 and a B-1 zoning district. The applicant seeks a variance from section 303.5.2 for the location, size, and advertising logo on a 3.1 square foot off-premise directional sign. The applicant requests a waiver from the requirement for certified site/plot plan less than two years old. Good evening, sir. Could you identify yourself for the record?
Good evening. I'm Greg Belzecian. I'm the owner of 169 Route 6A in Yarmouth Port. I'm really here because of the neighbors on both sides have been complaining about the traffic that we've created. And they're asking us to put up additional signage. The current parking sign bylaw allows for only a very small sign, and we have that sign, but it's still not enough. We were... We also put the advertisement on there so people knew where they were going because other businesses are getting parked in as well. So they should know these... This spot, and then the next petition is for the next location. These two parking areas are for Lighthouse Keepers customers. You'd be surprised how fast people even looking. And there's a big line. They still drive by the line, and they need to be directed. So we've designed these signs to give direction to customers and call out where they're allowed to park.
Okay. All right, and could you explain how you meet the criteria for a variance?
I can only say that the allowable sign is small, and this is larger. And Mark Grills told me I need to come here and ask for a larger sign. But I'm not qualified to answer your question technically.
Okay, all right. That's an honest answer. All right, we're gonna go to the board for questions unless there's anything else you'd like to add.
Just as I mentioned, the phone call came into the town manager. He asked me to design a sign. We met with Old Kings Highway, got approval. And this is really just following through on neighborhood... Neighbors' request for larger signage.
Well, now, I have... If I could ask a question, this is for an off-premise, this particular form of relief, correct?
I'm confused about the word "off-premise" because the driveway is located on the property. And the parking lot is on... It's on the same property, so I'm confused about the off-premise.
Where is the Lighthouse Keeper's pantry?
Oh, yes.
At 169... At 173, is that correct?
Correct. I own 169, which is right... Excuse me, my apologies. 169 is the adjacent parking lot, and I own that property as well. So this is an off-premise parking lot, correct?
Okay. I have a question. I'm looking at, on my computer, a picture of 173. It shows the building is blue. I don't know that it is. And then I'm seeing this red little dot in the front. Is that where you're planning to put that sign up right there?
Yes.
So you're gonna put that up, and you're gonna put parking that way for Lighthouse Keepers that's located the next property over. Is that correct?
That's correct. And we've... We have... We put in a walkway so customers can safely walk between the properties. We don't want to adjoin the properties because then we'd have to comply with fire regulations, and then we would lose the whole back as a fire lane, and we'd actually go backwards in terms of parking. So we did do a small decorative walkway, which actually customers are driving through. But it's a small decorative walkway to allow people to conveniently walk back and forth.
Okay, okay. And it's your representation that you can't do this with a two-foot sign? Why not?
The current sign size that we are utilizing as a directional sign without advertising is too small, and the customers are just blown by it. So we're looking for a larger sign so customers will know where to go, which is for the public, not for our own advertising purposes.
Well, I think most people can find you because I drive by. They're almost on a daily basis, and you get cars all over the place.
You're a very practical person, and you have mental and emotional discipline.
Okay, I'm glad to see you're trying to get them there. I guess one of the concerns that I have is I'm seeing a lot of logos. You've already got a logo, the same logo at the Lighthouse Keepers, the sign that you have presently. I'm looking at the location where you wanna be on the next petition, and it looks like it's right below that with the same logo, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's two driveways, identical signs.
Fifty feet up the street that's got the same logo that says parking on it?
That's correct.
I think, and I won't speak for others, but I think the issue that I have is I'm just seeing too many Lighthouse Keepers logos. What if we approved you and everybody else around you wanted to do the same thing?
I think that the situation is slightly different in that each one has one... Each, for example, Barfield's, she would like me... She gets... My customer's parking in her lot, and it says Barfield's. And the same thing with the pediatrician. They have a dedicated parking that's asphalted and out front, and my customers are parking in their lot. And Hallidts has two parking spots, and customers are parking all the way down there. So I'm just trying to be as neighborly as I can and as clear as I can to my neighbors that these... And I'm advertising and showing to my fellow streetmates that I have dedicated parking to get them away from their businesses and drive them to mine. It's more of a neighborly aspect, not an advertising... Not for advertising purposes, but to be clear to the traveling public that doesn't have the same emotional wherewithal as you may have to be able to slow down, know where they're going, and to make the proper turn.
Okay, okay. Well, others may have some questions. I'm gonna come back around to that. I'm still not seeing where you meet the criteria for a variance, though. And you say you can't... So you're not willing to join these two parking lots?
It's not a question of willing. I think it takes me backwards in terms of the number of parking spots available because I'd have to put a fire lane in the back. And that's, again, this is the building commissioner, and I haven't spoken to fire. I'll be hap... Listen, as far as I'm concerned, if you don't approve it, I can go to my neighbors and say, you know, I went to the town. This is the sign I went to, and they have other opinions, and I'm gonna keep working at it. Doesn't bother me. I'm really just trying to be the best neighbor that I can be. So, yes, I can go to fire. I can ask them about a fire lane in the back. I've been told that I will lose that access because it'll become a fire lane. And I really wasn't planning on joining the lots as much as I was trying to have some additional parking available. It started off as employee parking, but I never thought that we would be this busy. I never thought that I'd have lines out the door this time of year. My business is up. I'm 100% on a daily basis, and I need to do something to help my neighbors. So I'll follow through to the best of my ability, but I think this is a reasonable solution based on the quest of my neighbors and the way the traveling public seems to be not paying attention to even the one sign that I have.
Okay. All right, well, we'll come back and have a further discussion about this. Mr. Martin, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
I don't think I have... Excuse me, I don't think I have any questions. I'd have some of the same concerns you do, Sean, just mainly in terms of the precedent setting scenario. I can see how the petitioner would want this and needs it to be a little more visible so that people aren't missing it, as we said. But I am having a little trouble saying how can we allow this and not others that have been before us. Maybe a little smaller or a little less logo or something like that might be more logical.
Okay. Mr. Mantoni, any questions?
A couple of questions, yeah. So I don't... I'm not exactly sure where the sign is going. I don't have a red dot.
Okay.
So if you could be more precise.
At 169?
Yeah.
When you're facing the building?
Yeah.
There's the barn that we're rebuilding is straight in front of you. It'll be on 6A to the left of the drive. There's a voila sign there now for the business wall. It'll be opposite that, low on the ground level.
So right next to the drive going in?
Correct, next to the driveway, correct.
Okay. The other thing I have is, you know, if you're gonna use 169 for parking, it looks like you only have one entrance and one exit on that property as opposed to the Lighthouse Keepers where you have, you know, an entrance coming in and going out.
Correct.
So do you anticipate any problems with, you know, cars coming in going in? Is it wide enough to accommodate traffic?
It's not two-way tra... It definitely cannot be two-way traffic. I mean, it's definitely one in, one out, and it's definitely an accommodation for the customers that are coming.
Because even if you have them parking the back, and I agree, there's... Something needs to be done here. But it's tough pulling out even out of Lighthouse Keepers, out to 6A.
And we had... These are the conversations when we first bought the business about parking on the street, trying to minimize all that. But literally, it's kind of a phenomenon at the moment, and I hope the phenomenon continues, honestly, because it's been... It's been a lot of fun. The employees are really doing great. We've had no turnover. I mean, the staff is really behind it. I think it's a really good opportunity for the town. And we just had the state economic development person visit twice. It got Food and Wine Magazine. We really have something going. So I'm trying to do my best as a neighbor to come up with something that shows this is Lighthouse Keepers pantry parking. It's not for Hallidts. It's not for Barfield's. It's not for this. And I don't, you know... Will it dissuade them from putting cones up front? I don't know. Will it, you know... Everyone... All the neighbors are trying to come up with their own solutions. But at least I'm doing them... I'm stepping out as large as I can and as clear as I can so I can tell them this is, you know, whatever, loud and proud, pick your antidote. But I'm just trying to make sure it's as clear as possible while I understand the town has its point of view. This is a good way for the customer to know and for the neighbors to know.
I agree. There needs to be some direction.
Yeah.
But how many cars can you accommodate in those two lots combined?
I don't have a number. You have to actually watch how people jenga their cars in and out of the one lot. And as you know, the other lot's been under construction, so we actually haven't finally framed that out. But they're literally driving over all the brand-new grass. They're driving between the trees. They're driving, like I said, between the new walkway. So we are still trying to come up with a structure that makes sense to give, you know, discipline and order to the area. But I gotta finish the construction in the barn first.
Yeah. I mean, I know that's a little bit off signage, but...
No, it's all... It's all relative. I understand your question. I just can't give you the clearest answer. We're not gonna make a... I don't believe we're gonna make a U-shaped drive around the barn, and we don't... I don't think it makes sense to join the lots. I just think that it would just be one big parking lot, and I really wasn't interested in that.
Yeah.
I think there's some other trip, about 30% of the parking going to one business and another. But it doesn't seem to be pertinent.
Okay, all right, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Murphy?
Um, I definitely think the signage will help. I mean, my kids dragged me over there in the middle of the whole mayhem. And the parking was... You took your life in your hands when you went in there. I mean, people were fighting over spots. It was...
I think if we, you know... Yeah, when we... We let the traveling public take care of themselves. It's just not... It's... We don't have valet. We don't, you know... We don't have... I'm just... You know, we're blessed and surprised by how much volume we're doing there, but...
Well, it hit social media.
It did.
That's what happened. Yeah. No, I don't have any questions. I think signage is definitely needed. No, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Mr. Scanlon, do you have any questions?
Yeah, excuse me. So as I understand it, the sign will then go in front of 173?
There'll be... I'm requesting a sign. This is 50% of the agenda. One agenda item is 169 for the same sign to then be put on 173. So there'll be two signs showing that we have dedicated Lighthouse Keepers pantry parking in two lots showing the entryway to both lots.
Right, but the lots are not contiguous, so...
Correct.
The lot for the Lighthouse Keepers in 173 puts it, you know, then the pedestrians have to cross over some grassy area and back?
There's a gravelled walkway.
All right. I mean, I'm all in favor of putting the signage in there. I mean, I've been... You know, I've driven by and tried to get the right turn off. And as you say, you know, taking a left turn on 6A during the summer is always a hazardous assignment. So I'm in favor of the signage. I guess my other question is, is that someone mentioned on the board the size of the signs. And I'm not exactly sure what our limitations are. Could someone... Excuse me?
The limitations are two square feet. They're asking for a 50% increase. Plus, they're going to have the post to support them, which they don't have. But that's what you're gonna see, so...
Mm-hmm.
It will be noticeable. I actually have another question, too. Did you speak to Mr. Grills as to whether you can actually use 173 as a parking lot for 169? Or, excuse me, 169 for 173?
We had a very open discussion about it. And I think because it was in, you know, I went with Bob Brittenhour to his office along with Old Kings Highway, and this was the solution that he recommended was to come here. But yes, he's aware.
Talk about it in terms of zoning, not meeting with the town manager.
Well, I'm just saying that if it were left to me, I wouldn't be asking for this. I'm just trying to come up...
Did you ask Mr. Grills if it was legal for you to use 173 as a parking lot for 160... Or, excuse me, we're taking these two together because they're together. Did you ask Mr. Grills?
As I alluded to before, there was something about a 30% rule he mentioned during our conversation but did not make a big issue of it. If I could use 30% of a lot as dedicated space to help another business, if I went above that, there may be an issue. But he did not spend a lot of time on that.
Okay. Because I don't think you can do it. I also think if you're gonna make this a parking area, that you need to have a parking plan. We need to see parking spaces. You should have a site upgrade. Now, whether you wanna say about the 30% rule, I'd have to hear from him on that. But I don't think that you can legally just make this a parking lot for an adjoining property without relief from this board. The sign, you... For us to allow you to put up a sign, in my opinion, would allow you to begin violating the law. I'd like a written opinion from him on that. But in terms of the signs themselves, is there anything else that you'd like to add at this time?
I think I've pretty, you know, pretty clearly said if it's not, you know, if it's not in the board's interest, it's fine. I've done my best by my neighbors, and that's okay with me.
Okay.
But I am trying to be a good neighbor, more than I'm trying to assert myself into an issue.
No, no, no. We appreciate that, and we're glad you're doing well, okay? We certainly want you to do well. I have a... Does everybody have an overhead view of this property in their packet?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd like everybody to refer to that. Now, we're looking at an over. Everybody, I've got them out. I personally think the solution to this problem is not two signs and two parking lots. I think it's one sign and one entrance to a parking lot. And then if you wanna have interior directional signs, I think you need to, in the back of the lot, cut through a driveway to allow people to go into the 169 parking area in the back. And you and I have been back there before, Mr. Belzecian, so you certainly have a lot of room to expand back there. Would you agree with that?
I do. I was gonna... I think my backyard neighbors are... As I promised them to plant trees and make it green. I think that's the expectation, and I think I prefer that over...
You're gonna have to make some choices at some point.
Yeah, no, I mean, I will choose green, as I mentioned. I'll be happy to meet with the fire department, but I believe I'm gonna lose a good portion of it because I'll have to have a dedicated, open fire lane for a hook-and-ladder to make a turn back there. And it's... That's not...
Well, I don't know how a hook-and-ladder can go into 173 and turn around right now.
Yeah, I'm just telling you what I believe that will cause... That adjoining of the lots will cause that to happen. And I'll probably have to upgrade more.
Okay, all right.
And I, like I said, I have... I can do more homework because I have not completely vetted that, but that's what I understand.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Does anyone who wishes to... Anyone with their hands raised, Dolores?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, does anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition, please come forward? I don't think we have anybody. Anybody have their hand raised, Dolores?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there anything else that you'd like to add, Mr. Belzickian, before we close this hearing to the public?
If, I'd rather withdraw than get a no. That way I can come back again, rather than being stuck with a decision I have to wait two years to hear back on.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what. It's not gonna be my intention to box you in like that, to force us to take a vote once we close this hearing, okay? I don't think the other members would do that, to you or to anybody else. So that's certainly not our intention. But I think what I'd like to do is have a little bit of a brainstorming with the board right here and a discussion about the merits of your petition and possible solutions that we might suggest to you. Anybody wish to open this for a discussion? I'm more than happy to start, unless someone wants to go ahead.
Be our guest.
Okay. All right, so we have this overhead picture that we can all see, and we can certainly see two parking areas that are desperately needed to supply the parking for the Lighthouse Keepers, which has turned into a very successful business in Yarmouthport. And I think we're all happy to hear that. I have been in there myself, it's a very nice place, and I only wish them to do well. Having said that, I can't support this petition in its present form. I'm not in favor of a sign, a directional sign for Lighthouse Keepers, directing them into an adjacent property that has, that I don't believe is an approved parking lot. And there's really no, you just, you, you just can't do it. And he hasn't met the criteria for a variance for a larger sign. I'm also a little concerned about the logo as well, you're not supposed to be advertising on it, but I can see how the sign looks nice, I don't really have a big problem with that. In terms of the sign, and I'm, we're gonna take these together, Mr. Belzickian, even though we can call them one at a time, but they, they're so close in facts that there's no sense in hearing both of them twice. In terms of the 173, which is the Lighthouse Keepers, one of the issues I have with the sign is it's gonna be right below the existing sign that says Lighthouse Keepers. So it's just too busy for me for that. I would like to see that sign cut down a little bit. I don't really have a problem with the logo because I think that is directional in and of itself to identify where the parking is for Lighthouse Keepers, which is absolutely necessary. I think the best solution for this is for him to open up the parking lots between 173 and 169 in the back with a driveway. Come back to us with a parking plan. If he needs some relief as far as buffers are concerned, I won't speak to the rest of the board, but I have an open mind about giving him some relief for buffers. We can talk about in-law trees, but there really needs to be some parking spaces back there, and it really should be in and out on that particular 173 property. So I'm suggesting overflow parking to 169, which he would need relief for, I believe, because it's on another piece of property. We can talk to Mr. Grills about that. But one directional sign for the parking, and that would be located on the Lighthouse Keepers property. Anyone else have any comments or suggestions?
I was, I agree. That's exactly what I was thinking, believe it or not. The first thing that came to my mind was combining these and using 169 as overflow. So if we can direct them to 173, and if everything's full, you know, with a signage in the back, overflow parking for Lighthouse Keepers here, that, I guess the only concern, Sean, would be upon the exit of 169, they're gonna go through, they're gonna go right through his property there to leave. They're not gonna go back out the way they came, so...
It's impossible. I mean, it's too narrow of a lot to think you're gonna make a turn in there and come back out, and then to have two-way traffic in the back. I mean, I probably won't spend the money on a study. I thought I was gonna, for the building itself, and when I got at 169, I'm building a new barn, the major building is under huge renovation because it's just rotten. I did upgrade the septic, I've put a ton of money into it. I mean, if I just leave it unsigned, I'll leave it unsigned, at least I get one sign that can tell the neighbors I got, I got as much as I could get. I really don't wanna spend that much more money on it, to be honest with you.
Well, maybe we don't, maybe we don't have to go through a traffic study and all of that.
Well, you should, I mean, I, I appreciate that, but to do it right, we gotta do it right. And that's, that'll just be my nature. I'll have to come up with the correct turns. I don't want, I wouldn't, it's already compromised, and it's kind of country compromised because it kind of is what it is. But if you're gonna ask me to go ahead and make it right, then it's gonna take a minute to make it right. It shouldn't, but if I'm gonna put my energy into it, I'll do it correctly.
Okay. Well, then, that, that would be my suggestion, if that's what you wanna do. But as I said before, I, I could not support what you're proposing tonight.
Okay, well, at least I got, potentially, there's one sign on 173 that's directional, and that's fine. At 169, maybe in the future, as that property gets straightened up, the construction's over, maybe it's worthwhile revisiting.
Anyone else?
No, I concur with, I concur with both of them. I think, again, if it comes to that at some point, the idea of having another little driveway that goes over to 169 from 173 that says additional parking, or whatever would be a logical way to at least reduce it to only one sign on 6A.
Okay. Barbara?
Um, no, I don't have anything to add.
Tim?
Yeah, I think the addition of an additional sign for overflow parking makes sense. Having another one on 169 just kind of confuses things, since you have the main business sign there on, on the front lawn. So...
Okay, okay. Well, in terms of the, now, he's, what we're gonna do right now... Okay, so we're on petition, right now, we're technically on petition 169. That's for the off-premise sign next door to Lighthouse Keepers. Are we all in agreement that we're not supporting that sign?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Belzickian, you heard the opinion of the board. Do you wish us to take a vote on that petition, the off-premise sign? Or do you wish to withdraw that request for relief without prejudice?
I wish to withdraw the relief without prejudice.
Okay. Do we have a motion to allow Mr. Belzickian to withdraw that petition? That would be 5195, without prejudice?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Scanlon, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by?
Me.
Dick?
Nick.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? We're gonna take a roll call vote. Tim?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So that petition is withdrawn without prejudice. Now, we're gonna move on to petition 5196. I am just going to read into the record the legal notice here, just so everybody's clear what we're talking about. This is petition 5196, and that's at 173 Route 6A LLC, Ann Gregory Belzickian, property location 173 Route 6A, Yarmouthport, Mass. It's in an R40 in a B1 zoning district, and the applicant seeks a variance from Section 303.5.2 for the size and advertising logo on a 3.11 square foot on-premise directional sign. The applicant requests a waiver from the requirement for a certified site plot plan less than two years old. Okay, so we have discussed that because that's part of what we've been discussing. Now, in terms of that particular sign, you've heard my comments that I think it's a bit large, and it's right next to the actual sign for the property, so you're gonna see basically two signs that say Lighthouse Keepers. So I kind of have a problem with that. I think if it were a little smaller and said parking with an arrow, so it looks like the sign is actually junior to the main sign, I would feel more comfortable with that. I think that they could get away with a smaller sign. That's my opinion. Anyone else like to chime in on that?
Currently, there is a smaller directional sign that just says parking, and people do not see it. We need a larger sign that says Lighthouse Keepers and parking. This is a good-sized sign for the traveling public that doesn't live here, that comes down the street during the summer. It is the right thing, it is the right proportion. I understand your concern, but you're having, you're not representing the customer that's coming in that's not from here.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Belzickian?
I think I said too much.
Okay, we're closing that, this hearing to the public and the petitioner. If we want a question from, we will ask you, but we appreciate your input there. Anyone else have anything to say about this before we take a vote? Dick?
You know, as long as it's just one, I think I'm, could be comfortable with this, with it being a little bit bigger, I was, you know, I prefer certainly if it was a little smaller and didn't have quite as much of a logo on it, but I, I don't find it obtrusive. And if the neighbors are all comfortable with wanting it, I guess I could be okay.
How, how big is the presence sign that you have up right now, Mr. Belzickian? What's that size sign that you have hanging from that post?
Oh, no, that's, that's an open sign. The one that we have is on the ground, it's a separate sign in the same location that we're proposing this. It says parking, it's probably 20...
No, 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 I mean, I mean the actual size of the sign for Lighthouse Keepers, it says coffee's on underneath it.
Yeah, I don't remember the, I didn't measure that for this meeting, I'm sorry.
Wouldn't that sign actually be smaller than the directional sign?
No, the sign on the, no, the building sign is much larger. This is not, that's gonna be 30 more, that's gonna be more than 30 inches. 30 by 30.
The one that's on 6A that I'm looking at right now?
Yeah, it's gonna be, I mean, I would say it's gonna be 30 by 30, but honestly, I didn't, I didn't measure for the meeting.
Okay, because it doesn't look like it's as big. Okay. John, what are your thoughts?
So, just a couple of questions so I'm clear. So this sign now for 173 is going where? Right by the entrance?
Right by the entrance. Currently, there's a small parking arrow that is the largest allowable.
Yeah.
That's why we're here, because we can't make anything larger than that. So this is, takes that place of that directional sign, it would be an arrow.
And so this would be double-sided?
Double-sided, correct.
So you can see it from either direction?
Correct.
Okay. I think I can live with this. I think it's that important that we direct these folks somewhere.
Okay. Barbara?
Um, yeah, I'm, definitely, they need the signage. I mean, it isn't so much for folks who live around here, it's for people that are here on a trip and vacation and, you know, heard about this place and trying to figure out how to get in and how to park. So I think it needs to hit them in the face. So I'm in support of it.
Good.
Is it absolutely necessary to have Lighthouse Keepers on it?
I think it'd be helpful for the people that are coming to visit.
Yeah, I mean, how do you know where you're going?
I just think, this, there's a line down the street, and there's a big street sign in the middle of the 6A, and people are just going by like they never saw it. I just, you know, and it has to be, and it has, the reason the pillars are there is because the people aren't, sorry, I don't offend anybody, but they're tough. They drive over stuff, they kick things, and, I mean, I spend more time cleaning up after the public, and I enjoy doing it with all my heart, but I just wanna make sure that we're putting stuff in that's gonna last and it's not gonna be too flimsy.
And I think the other concern is, you know, when I was there this summer, I mean, there's one, one side in and one side out, but people weren't paying attention to that.
They don't pay attention to that.
We're trying to come out, and they're coming right at you.
Yeah, correct. And then I don't know who made up the etiquette rule that you're supposed to back up onto 6A, but someone thinks you're supposed to back up, not back up into the parking lot, but back up onto the road. I don't know where that rule ever came from, but people believe that that's what you're supposed to do. It's crazy, sorry.
It was crazy there.
I'm open TV, I don't mean to be so abrupt.
Where exactly are you going to place this? Are you planning on placing this in the layout, in the street layout?
No, it's gonna be on the grass area that's, that, there's an existing parking directional sign now, the grass area, if you're facing the building, to the right of the building, but to the left of the drive-in, on the grass.
Well, all those people that are gonna park out front there, do you do anything to mitigate people parking in front of the building?
We do our best to, to do what we can, but the Yarmouth Police have been through with tickets and with their megaphones, getting people to move. There's a no-parking sign there now the state put up. We're very much excited for the Route 6A development that Kathy Williams is working on.
Well, I don't know what that means.
There's gonna be a redevelopment of that, there's a whole redevelopment plan for the commercial district of Route 6A, and there'll be a crosswalk that goes from Lighthouse Keepers pantry across 6A that will make parking in front of the building unavailable. And currently, it is, however...
Well, what can we do right now? Because you're saying people are blowing by it. If you've got people parked in the front of your store, which you do all the time, they're all the way down the street.
Correct, and that's why we're, that's why I...
What are you doing to mitigate it, not only in front of 169, 173, but also 169? Are you doing anything there?
I mean, I'm just trying to make it...
If you want this sign, and we wanna make sure that it works, if no one can see it...
Well, Mr. Chairman, there is a no-parking sign there, in front of 169.
This goes back to why I'm asking for two signs. It's just, we, I have an opportunity, because I own two parcels, to direct people where to park in a very clear and directional manner. Yes, I, could I do, could I put someone out on the street in a yellow jersey directing traffic? That would probably, I have not asked, I have not asked the police if I should hire a detail. I mean, those are things that we have not done. But we try to keep the parcels as pretty and as clean as possible and as safe as we can. We do go out on an hourly or regular basis to check the line, to make sure that people are not standing in the driveway. And sometimes people just park their car. We could go to them, we've gone to people and said, you're parking in a no-parking zone. They said, ticket me. I mean, they'll say, fine, it's not your problem. I mean, there are people who park and just leave their cars halfway through the driveway, and they walk away. And we actually have signs that say park to the right, and they park to the left of the sign. I mean, there's, you know, we, we don't, how do I say? I'm not driving the vehicle, I don't own the vehicle, I'm doing the best I can to run an orderly operation, and... I'm doing the best I can to run an orderly operation, and I'm coming to you with two visual opportunities to have people feel more comfortable and clear about what's available to them. These are private lots. They're not public. They're... unless you're... There's another whole story about the state of Massachusetts, but...
They're private lots that are what the public is being invited onto.
Correct, and we'd like them to feel comfortable and clear.
Well, I don't know that we're solving any solutions here. I don't even know that we have a location. I think we need to know the exact location where you're going to put this, because I don't think you can put it on state property.
No, it's not. It's on my private property, on the green grass to the left of the... To the left of the drive aisle where the current parking sign, directional sign is. It will not go in the travelway.
Okay. How far behind the... Where is it adjacent to your sign that you have on the property?
The building sign that shows the property, if you're facing the building, it'll be to the right forward.
I'm not facing the building. I'm talking about the one that's a long 6A that's hanging from a post.
Correct.
Do you still have that sign?
Yeah, it's going to be to the right of that sign, down low on the entry, facing the... At the entry drive aisle. If you're driving in, it'll be to your left, down low.
Okay.
But it will not be in the...
I'm in favor of a parking sign as he's designating on 173 in that spot. My question would be if it's... if the size is an issue, is it possible to scale it down to two square feet?
Yeah.
I think I have to go back... I have to go back to Old Kings Highway to get... to let them know that I'm changing the size of the sign, because I signed.
Making it small is usually not an issue, but I mean, I...
I still have to go and do it again. I'd rather not do it again.
Yes, I understand.
I'd appreciate it if I didn't have to go back again.
I'm in favor of the sign situated, you know, where he's... Or he... you know, where he specified. And, you know, I'm not trying to tell Mr. Belzickian how to run his business, but also maybe moving the sign post for the business to the opposite side of the lawn, the opposite side of the walkway, just to kind of differentiate the signs might be useful.
Okay, thank you. I would be in favor of this if it were a little smaller, okay? Now, I know you can meet the criteria of the bylaw, but you do have a logo on that, which is technically advertising, and these directional signs are supposed to be within the property. This one's really out on 6A.
Yeah, but it's still on premises, Sean.
That's correct. That's correct. I just think we're setting a bad precedent by allowing it to be larger than is allowable, and I'll tell you why, because there's a lot of businesses along there.
Yeah.
Okay? I could see InnoHo for one coming in next week and asking for one, because they have their parking lot in the back. They seem to be able to do okay. I also think this parking lot needs a lot of work here, okay? There should be some directional in, directional out. There needs to be work on this. I'm a little surprised that it kind of got to where it was without some further relief and without some requirements for upgrades. But that's not before us tonight. So we have a proposal for a three-foot... Three-foot... Three-by-3.11 square foot sign. He's looking for a variance for the location, the size, and the advertising logo. That's the three forms of relief that he's looking for for a variance. I don't believe that he's made... met the criteria for a variance. However, if there's no further discussion, I'm going to bring it to a vote.
Can we just clarify the size of the sign? That's 3.1 square feet.
3.11.
3.11 square feet.
Okay, yeah, that's... okay.
One quick question. Is there an exit sign on the exit driveway there on the other side?
I think that would be too much signage. This is just to show people where to park the exit should...
Because often that is the directional kind of signs, as long as they meet the size requirement. You know, you've got an in and an out, just like they do at Dunkin' Donuts or someplace like that.
I think we're trying not to do that. I think we're just trying to accommodate.
I guess it's an arrow on the driveway. It looks like...
I mean, I don't know.
There's an arrow in the driveway?
This is on the inside of the driveway, and I think it was just trying to get people to know where to go. And, you know, we could certainly turn it into a much bigger issue, but it doesn't need to be escalated, as I said. I'm here because the neighbors are asking me to do something, and this is a solution. And again, if the town's not happy with it, I'm okay with it, because I have... I've met... I have a legal sign that says parking. I have... I don't have to do anything for 169. I could put something out back that just says overflow parking, and it's okay. It's okay with me. I'm really just trying to come up with a solution that works for my neighbors. And it's okay for me to go back to tell them I went to ZBA. They didn't like what I had to say. If you want to go talk about it, please feel free, because I've done my best. It's okay with me, okay?
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the board? Hearing none. We're calling the question. Mr. Martin, how do you vote?
Need a motion?
Still thinking.
Okay, take your time.
Yeah, start the other end.
Okay, Mr. Scanlon?
I vote in favor of the granting the variance.
Okay. Ms. Murphy?
I'd vote aye. I'd vote in favor.
Mr. Man Tony?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Mr. Martin?
I can somewhat reluctantly be in favor.
Okay, and I'm a nay. That's four in favor, one against. The request for a variance is granted. As you know, once it's clocked with the town clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period that must elapse. After that period ends, Dolores will contact you. You can come get your variance. You must take it to the Registry of Deeds, record it, and bring a copy back for our file.
Mr. Chairman? Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Do we need a motion for them to vote on? I don't recall that.
Didn't we do a motion?
I don't believe so.
Oh, okay, then let's back this up. I thought we had a motion.
Don't recall.
Oh, we had a... Oh, that was on the other one to withdraw. Thank you, Dolores. Okay, we need a motion to approve.
I've so moved.
Motion made by Mr. Scanlon. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Man Tony. Mr. Scanlon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Man Tony?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And I'm a nay. Okay, four in favor, one against. You heard what I said about the 20 days must elapse, correct, Mr. Belzickian?
Yes, I did. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Hopefully it helps. Hopefully it helps.
Yeah.
The next matter on our agenda is Petition 5197. Chelo... Chelco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless. Property location is 20 Old Hyannis Road in Yarmouth Port. It's in an R40, the APD, and a Zone 2 district. The applicant seeks a special permit per 103.2 and 406.5 to install an emergency power generator to provide backup power for a permitted wireless communications facility to be installed and adjacent to the town-owned water tank located on the property within the Aquifer Protection District. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Tim Twardowski. I'm an attorney with Robinson &amp; Cole, representing the applicant, Verizon Wireless. I will do my best to answer any questions that the board may have this evening, but I do want to point out that there are some other members of the team who are attending via Zoom. That includes Aaron Valley, who is representing the generator supplier. The engineer, Konstantin Bootka, is also, I believe, on Zoom, and the site acquisition representative for Verizon, Igor George Evchuk, should also be available online. So this is a rather unique application. I've submitted a substantial stack of materials to the board. I apologize for all of the reading that you may have had to do. So what I'd like to do, if it pleases the board, is to do just a very brief introduction and overview of the project and then turn it to the board for any questions that you might have.
That would be fine.
I'm sorry?
That would be fine.
Okay, thank you. As indicated by the notice, this is an application for a backup power generator in connection with a wireless communication facility to be installed at 20 Old Hyannis Road. This is the water tank site. Currently, there is one wireless carrier that has equipment, antennas on top of the water tank, and then ground-based equipment adjacent to the water tank. In response to an RFP issued by the town, I think about a year and a half, almost two years ago, Verizon Wireless submitted a bid and was awarded the contract. We have a lease with the town to locate this facility in this particular location. We have a permit for the facility itself. That includes the antennas to be located on top of the water tank, as well as the ground-based equipment, which will be located in a fenced enclosure. I believe the enclosure itself is about 16 by 22 feet, and that's fully fenced. The only part of the facility that was excluded from the building permit that was issued by the building inspector is the backup power generator, which Verizon Wireless uses at all of their sites in order to enable wireless communications to continue in the event of a power outage. Because this facility is located within the Aquifer Protection District, we have already been to the Board of Health. I believe you should have a report from Mr. Lawson that includes a copy.
Yes, we do.
You do? Okay, fantastic. So you're aware that we've already been to the Board of Health. Just to briefly describe the generator itself. The proposed unit is a Generac SD050 diesel generator. The generator itself will be mounted on top of the fuel tank. The fuel tank has a 300-gallon capacity. It is double-walled. It's so that if there's a rupture to the itself, the exterior wall has capacity in excess of the 300-gallon capacity, so that it would capture any leakage from the tank. Also in the materials, you'll see that as part of the spill response plan, there are sensors that are installed on the fuel tank, as well as in the containment pan on top of the fuel tank, so that if there's any leakage, whether it be from fuel within the generator itself, that would include antifreeze, diesel fuel, et cetera, that will trip a sensor. That sensor automatically goes to Verizon Wireless's operations center, and they... that will trigger a response by a 24/7 response team directly to the site to address any possible leakage. That being said, as I mentioned, the top-of-tank fuel containment pan is the way it's described. It's kind of where the... It's actually the top of the containment pan. It's almost like a picture of a very shallow swimming pool. Any leakage from the generator motor itself would be captured by that containment pan. Conversely, the tank itself, as I mentioned, is double-walled steel tank. Any leakage from the tank itself would be captured by the double-walled aspect of that. Also, I should point out that the... All of the equipment, including the generator and the fuel tank, will be mounted on top of a concrete pad. At the request of the Board of Health, there was a question or a concern that was raised that even though the generator and all of the ground-based equipment is located inside of a fenced enclosure, there was the possibility that, whether intentional or by accident, a vehicle could back up into the generator unit, causing a rupture and a release of fuel or other fluids. In response to that, the Board of Health requested, and we modified the plan to include bollards surrounding that area of the compound, so that eliminates that threat. And I believe you'll see that reflected in the revised site plan that's included in your materials. With that, I will stop talking and turn it back to the board. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. If I'm unable to, I will try to call upon other team members to address your questions.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we all have the memorandum from Carl E. Lawson, Jr. He is the hazardous materials inspector for the town. He furnished us with a memorandum dated August 6, 2025. Counsel, I believe you're familiar with that. I read through your statement in support of the Aquifer Protection overlay district special permit, and your responses seem to address each one of the concerns that are in the memorandum. Is that fair to say?
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay, all right. So this generator, as I understand it, you're really just looking for a... You want an emergency generator. It's holding 300 gallons plus of fuel, right around there. It's got some oil and, I believe, antifreeze as well?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, okay. And those are the only hazardous materials that would be on-site unless a technician brought other materials onto the property that he needed to service the generator. Is that fair to say?
Yes, it is. No materials other than those in the fuel tank or in the engine, including the antifreeze and the oil, et cetera, as you mentioned, none of that will be stored on-site. All of those materials, the refueling would be done by truck. The maintenance will be done by a service technician who will bring whatever oil, oil filters, et cetera. You know, the materials, the fluids that are integral to the machine will all be brought on-site. All the materials, the hazardous waste produced by the site will be removed from site by the technician, and all of that will be done in accordance with the spill response plan that was presented to and approved by the Board of Health.
Okay, okay. And so this... Is your client prepared to agree to all of the requirements and recommendations from the Board of Health contained in the memorandum dated August 6, 2025? And in specific, I say, on pages five... Excuse me, on pages six and seven, and we can go over those?
Yes, yes, we are. Mr. Lawson did provide us with a copy of his report in advance, and we are in agreement with all of the recommendations, including those on seven. I think the ones on seven, there's a total of six, and they actually spill over to page eight and the one under.
That's correct. I'm just going to read those into the record, the ones on page six and the ones on page seven. Then there's one more on eight, just so they're on the record.
Thank you.
Yarmouth Health Regulations require the following regarding toxic or hazardous materials handling and storage, which applies to the proposal by Verizon. Number one, the business must register annually for a Yarmouth Board of Health handling and storage of toxic hazardous or hazardous materials license. No materials may be discharged to the environment. No outside outdoor storage of materials is allowed. All toxic and hazardous materials will be within the fuel tank generator or auxiliary battery cabinet, all of which are designed for outdoor use. All materials must be protected from vandalism. All telecommunications equipment containing toxic or hazardous will be surrounded by a six-foot-tall locked stargate fence. Additionally, traffic bollards will protect the generator from intentional vandalism in the form of vehicle strikes. Or unintentional, I guess. All materials must be stored inside secondary containment of 100% volume of the total amount of... of materials stored. Containers and materials must be stored in such a manner to facilitate visual inspection of each container. The Verizon Plan with sheet titled "Construction Details" in sheet number A4 shows spatial arrangement of, one, the generator with the fuel tank, two, the battery cabinet, and the other equipment indicating clear sightlines should be available to view the exterior of the generator, generator, fuel tank, and battery cabinet. Number seven, any wastewater must be properly disposed of by a licensed hazardous waste hauler. Number eight, absorbent material must be kept on-site for use in the event of spills. Spill response kits containing absorbent materials will not be stored on-site because the facility is not staffed. However, spill response kits containing absorbent materials will be brought on-site in the vehicles of service technicians and the fuel delivery service. And number nine, safety data sheets, in parentheses, SDS, for each toxic or hazardous materials must be maintained on-site and readily available. Safety data sheets for each toxic or hazardous material will not be stored on-site because the facility is not staffed. It will not have an office or any building in which the, which to store SDS. SDS will, however, be available to service and fuel delivery personnel when they are working on-site. You're in agreement with that, counsel?
Yes.
Okay. Board of Health hearing recommendations. Number one, the maximum allowed total combined storage volume of toxic and hazardous materials is 400 gallons. Number two, the emergency spill response plan submitted by Verizon Wireless to the Board of Health must be immediately available in either electronic or print form to all service and fuel delivery personnel while they are on-site, and they must be familiar with the plan. Number three, safety data sheets for applicable materials must be immediately available in either print or electronic form to all service and fuel delivery personnel they are on-site, while they are on-site. Number four, spill response materials must be immediately available to all service and fuel delivery personnel while they are on-site. Number five, toxic or hazardous waste generated or removed from equipment must be removed from the site for proper disposal immediately after servicing and never left unattended. And turning over to page eight. And number six, bollards, vertical structures designed to protect infrastructure from vehicle strikes, must be installed and maintained in such a manner to protect the generator fuel tank. The Board of Health and Health Department respectfully request that if this proposal is approved by the ZBA, the preceding six conditions please be included in any ZBA decision. Furthermore, if the proposal is allowed by the ZBA, these items will be included as conditions of the annual Board of Health license. Are you in agreement with all of those recommendations, counsel?
Yes, we are, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So you would be in agreement that we incorporate the entire memorandum as written by the Board of Health, that's generally our custom to do so, into the decision?
Yes, that would be my expectation.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you. Um, I'm gonna go to the board now. Mr. Martin, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
So the, the site is almost 10 acres, I guess, right?
I believe that's right, yes.
Yeah, and I think it's fenced at the, at the street entrance.
I, I believe it's, it's either fenced or gated, access to the, meaning access to that, yes.
All right, I mean, I think, I mean, I think all the Board of Health considerations that are here that need to be incorporated will, are, are important and seem to be okay with everybody, and other than that, I can see why you might like it to stay running during, uh, power outages, so. I don't have any problems.
Thank you. John?
I don't have any questions for the petitioner. Thank you.
Okay, Barbara?
Just one question. Talking about the emergency response team, where are they coming from? What would, how, what would be their response time, I think, is what I'm trying to get at?
Yeah, that, that's a, a great question. We, we do have, because this is not a built site, I don't think we have a contract in place yet. The, the, in my understanding, in terms of the, the company that will be contracted with to serve this, service this site has a location on the Cape. I, I'm not gonna pretend I know exactly where it is, but that's my understanding, except they're, they have an office on the Cape.
Okay, all right. That's all.
Okay. Just following up on that question there, counsel, uh, would you be in agreement if we put in the decision that you ought to contract someone locally that will respond in the event that your people can't respond to it? In an emergency situation? I imagine you probably would use someone local, wouldn't you, if there was a spill there?
Y- yes, that's...
Call 911.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. You know, to clarify, the response team will not be Verizon Wireless employees. They're not, there, there would be a, an outfit that does this type of work, not just for Verizon Wireless, but for other companies as well. So it's a, a third-party contractor that would maintain and, and handle response to any emergencies or spills.
Okay, so you could supply us with the name of a contact person?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, all right, very good. All right. Tim, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
Excuse me, one question. On the three-ring binder that we received, the emergency spill response plan, which is Exhibit F to the, uh, three-ring binder?
Yes.
Item number eight is a little bit ambiguous. Could you explain that for me, please?
Where, where it says the in container labeled spill response plan?
What is, I mean, that's not a complete sentence. What, what does it mean?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's a, a typographical issue. That's, it's really eight, and seven and eight should be combined. What that's referring to is the, um, absorbent material, et cetera, will be contained in, in a container labeled spill response materials. Apologies for that.
Yeah. All right, good. Yeah, really, I don't have a lot of questions. In my former life, we dealt a lot with these types of applications, and they're very common, and I think the, the submittal has been very comprehensive. And I don't want to redo any work that the Board of Health did, so I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Let me go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none. Do we have anybody with their hands raised, Dolores?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Please go forward. Seeing none. Is there anyone with their hands raised, Dolores?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Counsel, is there anything that you would like to add further?
No, Mr. Chairman, I, I think the, the presentation this evening, in, in combination with the written submittal, covers everything that I wanted to touch upon. But again, if there are any additional questions from, from the board members, we're certainly available and happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. I think we're going to, unless anyone else on the board has any other questions for either counsel or the petitioner, or any of their associates that are attending, does anyone have any questions for them?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make note that with the revision to that emergency spill response, that that revised document be submitted to the Board of Health and be available, you know, as needed.
Okay, sure, okay. We'll furnish that over to them. All right, is there, if, if there's nothing else, then I'm gonna close the hearing to the public, begin board deliberation. Anyone wish to begin a discussion or to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Would you include in your motion incorporating the memorandum of Carl Lawson dated August 6, 2025 from the Board of Health, as well in, from, he's the hazardous materials inspector?
Yes.
Okay, all right, very good. Jim? Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
As well as just one other condition, that counsel or the petitioner will furnish the board with the name of a, of a local contractor that will respond to an emergency in the event there is one. There probably won't be, these generators are pretty good. I mean, I don't think they bear a lot, but an emergency contact. Would you make that part of your motion, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion made by Mr. Scanlon. Anybody prepared to make a, second the motion?
I will, I will second it, subject to the, uh, addendums, so to speak.
Okay, all right. We have a motion made by Tim, seconded by Dick. Any discussion on the motion? The only thing that I would like to add is, I think the petitioner has demonstrated they've met the criteria. All right? And the demonstration is, is that no undue hazard nuisance or congestion will be created, and there'll be no substantial harm to the established future character of the neighborhood. I think they've demonstrated that, and I think they have demonstrated also that they meet the requirements under 406.5, that there'll be no danger to the public drinking supply. And they've made adequate safeguards that they'll ensure that. Anything else? Hearing none. We are going to take a vote. Tim, how do you vote?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So that passes five in favor, none against. As you may know, counsel, there is a 20-day appeal period once the decision is drafted with the town clerk. After that appeal period runs, you can, Dolores will contact you, take your special permit over to the Registry of Deeds, record it, and send proof of that back to our board.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions? Counsel?
Nope, understood. Thank you very much.
Did you want us to do a decision, or do you want to do a draft decision?
I'm happy to, to do the drafting, if you wish, but, you know, whatever your, your protocol normally is, I'm, I'm happy to, to abide either way.
Well, some people like to put their draft decisions. If you'd like to do one and submit one to us, we'll review it.
Okay, I will do that, thank you.
All righty, thank you very much. Barbara, we, uh, excuse me, Barbara. Dolores?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I believe we have minutes to approve?
Uh, we do, and everyone here was also at that meeting.
Well, well, we'll say that's all right, but sometimes that doesn't happen. I apologize, I don't have the minutes in front of me. Which minutes are we approving?
It is September 11, 2025.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve minutes from September 11.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion, hearing none. Dick?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So that passes five in favor, none against. Uh, I think that's all the business, isn't it, for tonight, Dolores?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Night, Tim.
Bye now.
Thanks.